Yeah, I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 20th, 2024 City Council Work Session Meeting. Today, we are reviewing our CEP applications. Right now, we have an hour scheduled to go through roughly 14 applications. So we want to make sure we get through them all. So I'll really quickly go over what our community enhancement program is. For those that don't know, I'm sure if you're here, you do know. It has been serving SCAPUs for more than 20 years. Through a competitive application process, City Council awards grants to qualifying organizations working within the SCAPUs' UGB for specific programs or projects that can be implemented within a one-year timeframe and that provide a public benefit to SCAPUs. SCAPU City Council recognizes the value that community organizations bring to SCAPUs community and attempts to grant all requests for financial assistance through an equitable, transparent, and structured process. Last year, we appropriated 40,804. It will be very close to that, so it's a little bit over $5,000 that each counselor can kind of assign. So as we did the math with 14 applicants today, with the total request, that's well, it's over 55,000. So as you can see, not everybody will get their full amount, but we want to do our best to make sure everybody qualifies, can get something. We'd like to help. So that being said, I'm going to do four minutes on the clock. That's just as a guideline, you know, take your time. But and if we get to seven and we're not done, we will stop, open up our regular meeting, and then continue so we can get through all of you. I'm not sure if everybody's here. I'm reading one. But that's just a guideline for you. I'm not going to look at it. But we're just going to go down the list. And today, let's go with Amani Center. You're going to be up first. And Branches Church is on deck. SCAPU Senior Center in the hole. Probably if we have any questions, you can ask, but most likely, we'll listen to application. We've got your applications here on file as well, what you submitted. And from there, appreciate it. Thank you.
Better being A. My name's Beth Colito. I'm the Deputy Director at the Amani Center. We are Columbia County Child Abuse Assessment Center. I think that a lot of you actually know what we do already, but we provide forensic child abuse evaluations for children suspected to be victims of abuse, neglect, drug endangerment, and witness to violence. And we are here to request $5,000 towards that mission this year. Last year, we served 45 kids from SCAPUs, which was two more than the year before. Right around 18% of our cases come from SCAPUs. And just to share what's been going on with us recently, other than we're trying to build a new building to serve our kids better and increase our services and establish mental health programs in our community. We also have been partnering really closely with Officer Gabe Johnson here at SCAPUs. He is, I don't know if you know that he's taken the lead on child abuse detective investigations in your precinct. And we were just able to invite him to come to the Oregon Child Abuse Symposium with us last week. He's been very engaged in our multidisciplinary team program that we have that wraps around services between law enforcement, DHS, schools, child welfare, counseling doctors, and everybody that, and the DA's office, to make sure that kids aren't falling through the cracks and their cases are getting a full understanding of what's going on so that all of the engaged agencies can be involved in the case together. Gabe is the person that comes from SCAPUs on a regular basis to our weekly meetings, and he seems to be really integrating with our agency well. We really enjoy having a dedicated person from SCAPUs who just shows up and is really engaged in the process of child abuse investigations. Unless anybody has.
When is your big fundraiser this year?
Our annual fundraiser this year that is held at Grabhorn Farms is Saturday, September 14.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Branches Church, SCAPU Senior Center on deck, CASA in the hole. All right.
Hello. My name's John Kengas. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors of Branches Church in SCAPUs. And part of the things that we're looking at as we have continued to grow at Branches Church is the front of the building is due for renovation. This partnership, we approached as a way of deadifying Highway 30 in the section of property right in the middle of downtown, right? But right between the two banks, a lot of traffic goes by there. A lot of people sit at the stoplight waiting there. And there's an opportunity for us to work together to make some improvements with, we're looking at as a driver, riverbed, rock feature, harkening back to some of the, some of the origin times. Now, I recognize that partnering with a church on this matter could be viewed as in opposition to the second point, that this program is not intended to promote religion or neglect, what? Inhibit are the exact words. And so the idea that we're looking for here is instead of promoting religion, we have a lot of community organization activities that are going on at Branches Church. We host NA weddings, funerals, the Boy Scouts, band practice. There's a lot of, a lot of nonreligious activities that are going on there. And so a partnership could, could work well for, for the City Council to do some deadification right up front on the highway and partner with the side of our organization that does not necessarily promote religion.
Great. Are they in the Urban Renewal District? Okay. Right.
Yeah, that was going to be a question I asked. Have you considered the Urban Renewal Grant Program? It actually does not cap out at 5,000. You could be eligible for more.
We approached this one. We did balance the two, and they were, I think, in our, in our board meeting, looking at the Urban Renewal District, there are, there are plans on our, on our docket that might well fit into that, but this one seemed to be a better fit and more the, kind of the size of something to start with.
All right. Thank you. SCAPU Senior Center, you are up. CASA deck, Columbia County Hub in the hole.
Thank you for having me here. Clara Powell from the SCAPU Senior Center. And what we desire with this fund money, it's, uh, is to purchase a two-basket commercial deep fryer to replace our one-basket home counter deep fryer. And this would benefit, this would be professionally installed with the hood rewiring, so that it will be definitely up to code. Now, this would benefit our Bingo Cafe probably the most, maybe not too much congregate meals because we don't do a lot of fried food for congregate meals. This would definitely expand our menus. And as far as safety goes, it would definitely make our orders much faster and much more diverse, and it would expand our menu. Now, we will be doing some moving around in our kitchen where it would be more handy for the cook to be able to be able to, on, on the stove and the oven, and then have the deep fryers where she won't have to go around the way it is now. So there will be some movement there. Everything will be up to code and inspected. The Fire Marshal, the Health Department, and all of the other things that need to be acquired to make sure this is safe for the Senior Center. It definitely will help us with future fundraisers. Questions?
Bingo tonight, I hear.
Definitely now serving, do a lot of concession foods. We have a, we have a menu that does actually six deep-fried products, foods, and they have two, they have two home counter deep fryers, which not really, I would say, adequate for orders they get. So it would definitely help our cook, would definitely get out more orders to our people. And a lot of them, people come in earlier and they order foods, and she lines up the orders, she gets them out and serves them, and they're also during our, our intermission, which is actually 15 minutes. We do, do a lot of serving of food. I also want to get into fundraising and using our kitchen to a more fully, not a word, but to use it more, in a more maximum way than we have been using. And I think that would, deep fryers would really help. They, we asked for two commercial. Our kitchen had, really would like to have, we're asking for one right now, but we would really like to have two. That way, we would give us four baskets. She could, we could be more diverse. I think it would really help not only our customers at Bingo, actually, once we get fundraisers going, we can beat with the food cart. I never know.
Thank you.
Any questions? And I also would like to invite any of yous to come and give you a tour of our kitchen, and you can have a go in.
Wednesday and Friday lunchtime, you'll be serving.
You go. Next time you're there, I'll take you around.
Under Clara's leadership, we're coming out of the DOJ, DOJ doghouse, so we're doing good.
Really nice to see.
Thank you. CASA's up, Columbia County Hub, deck, and Grant Watts Parent Organization in the hole.
Thank you for having me. My name's Paige Diaz. I am a CASA volunteer and CASA supervisor within Columbia County. And you'll see, our program does include Multnomah, Washington, Columbia, and Tillamook, but we do have an office in Columbia County in St. Helens. Not familiar with CASA? CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate. We advocate for children who are part of the child welfare system and have a dependency case that's open with the state. We are a legal party to the case, so we are the, kind of the eyes on the ground for the judge and report back basically how things are going with the child, what needs are there, maybe what a parent is or isn't doing, what DHS is or is not doing. We are a state mandated program, so every child that is in foster care within the state of Oregon should have a CASA advocate or CASA volunteer. We do only get 20% of funding from the state, even though this is a state program. And so with those funds, we use them to recruit, train, and supervise our volunteers. Currently, in our Columbia County program, we have two staff members that are full-time, including myself. We have had, we have 55 volunteers total within Columbia County and 85 total children that we've served within the last year. There are a lot of studies that have shown that children that have this type of advocate or stable adult in their life fare a lot better, they're less likely to re-enter care, they have better health outcomes into adulthood, and graduate school at a higher rate. So although we only have 20% of that funding that comes from the state, it is a mandate for every child in care to have a CASA volunteer. So that is what we're asking funding for. Any questions about our program or what?
I don't want to get too personal, but you do service SCAPUs.
You do, yes. Yeah, and we have, I believe, 18 total children within that last year that fall with either coming from the city of SCAPUs or being in a resource home or foster home within SCAPUs.
Yes.
Do any of the other cities or the county provide any funding?
We do occasionally from other cities get, get funding. We do have a big, it's actually next week is our, have an auction that's going to be within the city of Portland, so we do that about once a year, also have a golf tournament, but we are, we do apply for city grants.
In the past, are you aware of any cities within Columbia County or the county?
I believe we have gotten funding from the city of St. Helens. I'm not 100% sure on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Columbia County Hub up with GWPO on deck and SCAPU's Quanah's Club in the hole.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Witt. I am a board member for Columbia Guiding HUB. Well, introduction about, I think the HUB is a nonprofit that's been active in Columbia County since 2019. Our mission is to enrich the lives of young people in the county by providing access to programs for education, leadership, professional development. Our goal is to ensure that the next generation of residents have all the tools they need to survive and thrive. Some of the current programs that we involved with are a leadership camp, peer support groups, homeless and juvenile justice programs, high school senior career coaching internship, internship programs, and interactive and in-person, online community activities. We are currently in the middle of a contest for our local youth, ages 16 to 25. What this contest is, is a petition to help support a youth to open their own business. And so anybody can apply, and as long as they're 16 to 25, they can be a contestant. The contestant will save $12,500 in startup funds for their new business. We did this before, me and one of the other board members for St. Helens Economic Development Corporation, 2015 and 17. That was a different program in that it was adult-based rather than youth. The other caveat with, for that one was that had to be a brick and mortar. The two winners of that were Vault Elite, which is still in business, and Hallo's Pizza, which is also still in business. So we wanted to extend this contest to the youth, and just to get the ball rolling with them, the first thing they have to do is we teach them to write a business plan. So we started classes last week. Each of our contestants has to go to a class every Wednesday from May 15th through June 15th. They'll learn how to write a business plan, financial planning, marketing, and some other things that will help get their business off the ground. Be in, or having local business owners teach the classes, and then we kind of fill in the gaps with them as needed. Last week was our first class, and we had it in-person at the State Homes Public Library, and also broadcast it from Zoom. We realized that, you know, a lot of the youth, that's how they get things done, is online. But we actually had pretty good attendance for in-person. I was impressed. We also had adults, too. They're welcome to attend our classes. Obviously, they're too old to win, but it was refreshing to see some adults want to learn how to write a business plan. One of the areas of our current programs that we do is we work a lot with the Marty Canons class over at St. Helens, or SCAPUs High School. We teach resume writing, college information, career goals. What we found with a lot of that class is they're like, I don't want to go to college. You don't have to. There's a lot of successful people in this world who don't go to college. And so we show them alternate paths to do that. A lot of kids are afraid of going in debt, their parents have no income to pay for their college. Show them all their alternatives to get scholarships and things like that. Oh.
No, you're fine.
Sorry? I was going to be the one who did not go over to mine.
You're good.
Anyway, so we are seeking the $5,000 grant to help fund this contest. The winner will be picked in a Shark Tank style contest after their business plan has been created and they've made it through all the classes. We're going to have a little Shark Tank style where they present their ideas and business plans to local business owners, banks, things like that, who will pick a winner and award the fund. That's the short end of it.
You do say you deal with the SCAPUs High School, but you do have SCAPUs.
Absolutely.
Ids and adults throughout your program.
Absolutely. Actually, one of the adults that came in was like, she currently has a business here in SCAPUs, and she's struggling a little. So she was looking how to, a good business plan to maybe get some additional funds and help kickstart her business.
So I noted, I noted that you said that the two previous businesses, those are both St. Helens-based businesses, correct? Okay.
Yes, because that, that was with a different organization. It was through the St. Helens Main Street Program, so that's why, that's what, that program has since dissolved, St. Helens Economic Development Corporation, CHEDCO, no longer exists. And so we just spun off and kind of did something towards youth because it's more of a passion for us.
Got it. So where do you market to? You bring in, we're, you know, SCAPU City Council, so obviously, we're more focused on SCAPUs youth, so.
We did, our, a lot of what we do is through the Youth Era Program, which is county-wide, and it's run by, you know, early 20-year-olds. They do monthly projects online where they actually deliver materials to you, like county baking, you know, will deliver all the bounty stuff to their house and get on Zoom and teach them how to make brownies or, you know, paint rocks, whatever. So that's how we get a lot of to our youth. And just, you know, basically talk to the kids, you know? You got to get in front of them.
Thank you.
I'm going to just leave these here for you guys because this will fill in the gaps. These are flyers we made that answer the most common questions as far as where the funding comes from, what happens if your business fails, financial liabilities of that, because those are always really big questions of.
Do you have a couple of questions? So you mentioned that the business owners or business owners are the ones that are doing the classes for the students.
They're attending our, well, yes, yes.
And are you collaborating with, say, the PCC SBDC office and, say, OMEC because they're, I've.
We have tried. We actually were scheduled to appear at like a career fair they had, and they chose not to have us.
Okay.
But yeah, the president of our seat, seat of, is, has worked heavily with OMEC and PCC in the past, and.
Can we invite, be invited to the Shark Tank event?
Absolutely. In fact, yeah, it's kind of on the flyers. Basically, like Columbia River PewDie gave us a donation, and so they secured their, their spot. But yes, those who give us grants and funding definitely, they're part. It is, it's a fun event. I tell you what, just people get so excited, you know? So.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. DWPO up, SCAPU's Quanah's on deck, Riverside Community Outreach in the hole.
Hi, strangers.
Name and city, please.
My name's Megan Grayson, SCAPU's Oregon. Hmm. Um, we are speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Grant Watts Parent Organization. We support public education by financing field trips, school assemblies, classroom enhancements, and more at Grant Watts Elementary School here in SCAPUs. We believe that by supporting students, we are encouraging citizens supplementing education and overall creating a really positive community. But the main person of the hour is Ms. Beth.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to talk about the community garden at Grant Watts. So in 2022, we took the space in between the buildings where like kindergarten and first grade are located by the library, and we put in a garden space. Um, the, gosh, it feels like yesterday, but also a long time ago. There are 16 boxes. We had a collective of volunteers that came and turned it from a green, unused lawn space to a beautiful garden. And as you can see, we have grown a lot of things. So in the last, gosh, it's not even, it's been two years. We have taken this space and had everything under the sun, from pumpkins to strawberries to peas to salads. And I think it's best to see it in pictures. We have collaborated with the high school where the earth science classes come over and help us clean out and also plant and build things. We have our reading program come out. We, in the fall, when students came back, we harvested a giant bowl of tomatoes every other day, and they were put into the lunchroom for students in the salad bar. Every year, we have Earth Day celebrations where every student comes out and they do an art project in the outdoor classroom, which was funded by a grant from the city of SCAPUs. And then they also go into the garden. This year, it was cold, so they turned every box and all of the soil was freshly turned. We do salad parties. Kindergarten is going to be releasing their butterflies soon, so those will be out there. This morning, I delivered them some not-so-great-looking strawberries to feed their butterflies while they were still in their classrooms.
I think last week, they released all their ladybugs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a great space that we all use. And I will say, in the summer, when we have a lot of extra produce, I will clean it up and head it over to the library around Wednesdays when they have the free produce distribution. So we also just, Saturdays, when kids are at the library, we'll bring over bags of salad. And we, it's all about sharing and community.
And I think people know when they come to the Grant Watts Playground, families that play over the summer, kids know the garden space well, they go and pick what they, they want, but know not to overpick so they can share with everyone. One thing that wasn't in those photos that I think is really great, we have, our third grade teachers take the students out, measure the boxes, and they learn hands-on how to do area and perimeter math in the garden, which is always really fun that they're out there doing that.
Teaching the teacher.
Not to name anyone specific, yes.
So we are here asking for support and funding to convert our boxes from wooden boxes to metal boxes. So while we put wooden boxes in in '22, I had to redo one already. It was completely broken on one side. Just, we live in a rainy state, it's going to degrade. These metal boxes are quoted to be 20-plus years, and so we would love to have a sustainable community garden for generations to come. Questions?
How do you feel about butterflies? Just kidding.
I already know the answer to that.
I got, I got to hear from Beth about butterflies for like three minutes, so I knew the, knew the answer to that.
So it's going to be between first grade and second grade now, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
By the library, a great little inlet there.
This is a big passion of Beth's, and you'll notice in the background there, we had an artist come and do some mural work with our students this year, so now we have some beautiful artwork in the space as well that's out there. And then she also has listed the different funding sources, so she's also done an excellent job writing grants with other organizations and has worked hard to get some of these other metal garden boxes donated through grants as well. We also have Warren Elementary students coming, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, and so looking to expand the garden a little bit to make more room for new students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Riverside, no, we got SCAPU's Quanah Club, Riverside Community Outreach on deck, and the School of Horsemanship in the hole.
How you doing? My name is Sean McNabb. I'm here to talk about the SCAPUs.
How you doing? My name is Sean McNabb. Um, I'm here to talk about the Scappus Youth Center. It's a, Scappus Youth Center has been around for almost 30 years. I've been teaching here for, this is my 30th year. Want to say we started it about 28 years ago with the help of the city. It's a five-week program. Um, it gives kids an opportunity to, to stay active, to be busy. I think last year we had around 120 kids signed up. Um, through those five weeks, um, there's activities for them in the gym. There's different video games. And then on every Friday during that time, they go on an excursion like Oaks Park, movie theater. I think every trip was, was totally full. And one of the many things I love about Scappus is the fact that if you drive through town, you see so many kids involved in so many things. We, we graduate a lot of great kids and a lot of kids that want to come back and raise their families here. And I think that says a lot about this community and about this town. Um, and a lot of it is because of the involvement, the opportunities that we give kids. Uh, this is an opportunity to, uh, to continue that and here to ask for your support. Questions about that?
Just. I'll just add, it's a program that my boys have taken advantage of when there sometimes isn't a lot of things for youth to do. So I do think, I appreciate the opportunities.
Boys have gone through there as well and fortunately it was before my time. All was still there. Um, thank you. And I just appreciate it. Thank you.
You gonna ask me something?
About football, but not, you know, how are you looking? Okay, we have, uh, Riverside Community Outreach, Sandy School of Horsemanship on deck, Scappus Historical Society in the hole.
Well, hello. Is, there we go. Good evening. Hi, um, I am a proxy for Abby Olson, so I'm going to read exactly what she said. She told me not to go off script, which is really hard for me at times. Good evening and thank you so much for allowing Riverside Community Outreach to present to you tonight. Our executive director, Abby Olson, who would normally be here, is currently on a cruise chaperoning 30 students from St. Helens High School as they are on a singing tour. I'm Alex Tardif. I'm the treasurer for Riverside Community Outreach and I will be reading this message on her behalf. Riverside Community Outreach is so grateful for the continued partnership of the city of Scappus. Over the past several years, we have been able to serve families impacted by foster care in our local community through your generosity. As you have seen from our current application and previous reports, the city of Scappus continues to play an integral role in serving this vulnerable part of our community. With the time we have to present this evening, I would like to share a few examples of how the Community Enhancement Grant from the city of Scappus has served families impacted by the foster care system. Recently, a young individual who was living with a relative in foster care was given the opportunity to try out for the Rose City Youth Basketball Team. This young individual is hardworking and highly motivated. They excel at basketball. They were selected to play on the team, which is an incredible and life-changing opportunity for them. Unfortunately, the fees associated with playing on the team were outside of what this family could attain. Riverside Community Outreach, thanks to your generosity, were able to join and partner with other nonprofits and help cover the cost of his fees. This young individual is going to be playing basketball this summer in an opportunity they wouldn't have been able to have. We are so excited to see them have this opportunity and watch what doors open because of the chance to get to do something that they would not have been able to do without your support. Next, I'd like to share an example of when a baby came into care and was suddenly placed into foster in an emergency certification situation where the family receiving him had no crib, no diapers and no clothes. Because of your generosity, RCO was able to meet all of those babies' needs and surround that family in support and care during a very trying time. Once a month, Columbia, uh, once a month, Riverside Community Outreach hosts a Foster Parent Night Out. I can attest, these things are amazing. Um, and are provided with four hours of respite care. Foster parents are provided with four hours of respite care as their kids come and hang out with trained volunteers for hours of fun. Thanks to your generosity, we are able to have another year of Foster Parent Night Out for our local foster families. There are currently 10 foster families located in the city of Scappus and Riverside Community Outreach is pleased to be able to support all of these families. Your partnership is imperative to our ability to meet the needs of families. We aren't able to do this without your help. Providing support to foster families means that kids move less, experience less trauma and have more opportunities. Thank you for your continued partnership and support. We greatly appreciate you. Any questions?
You have the answers to the questions scripted. I, I know you're not supposed to go off script.
I mean, no, but there are 256 kids in foster care throughout our tri-county area. Uh, St. Helens is part of District One, which includes Clatsup and Tillamook. There are 110 foster homes. Um, and as a foster parent, I can tell you there are not enough foster homes and we constantly get calls that we have to say no to and these children have nowhere to go. Um, so the ones that we are able to reach, uh, a personal story of mine, actually, I was out mowing the yard one Saturday and Abby shows up at my house and I'm like, why are you here? I didn't schedule an appointment with you. And she's like, I got a bag for XYZ. And I'm like, yep, XYZ is living here. I'll take the bag. Um, and so those are the types of thing that this organization does. It fills in the gaps. When these kids are removed from their home and put into care, they generally come with nothing or very little. Um, and RCO is able to come in and make sure that these kids have access to books, to clothes, to toothbrushes, to the things they need in order to feel safe and secure, in order to start working through some of that trauma to be able to be successful.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Sandy School of Horsemanship, School Society on Deck, Scappus Library in the hole.
Hello, I'm Cassie Uer, um, the executive director of Sandy School of Horsemanship. We are located in Warren, but as I'll explain at the end, um, over half of our participants come from the Scappus area and we are meeting a need, um, that is felt by all of Scappus. Um, the mission of Sandy School of Horsemanship is to provide accessible equine programs focusing on life skill development for all individuals, including at-risk youth and people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, our four programs include therapeutic riding. This specifically caters to individuals, um, who need additional support when riding a horse, so people with intellectual development disabilities, um, people who have ulterior goals. This is a extremely utilized program in our community, um, as there are currently no Special Olympics chapters um, or sports or activities that are catered just to people, um, with ADD. We have an equine assisted psychotherapy program, psycho meaning just mental health. Um, through this program, we provide equine assisted therapy, um, which again is a much needed, um, service to our community. Um, horses assist in the therapy process by, um, providing the activity that can often, um, make people who've experienced trauma either open up or be faced with some of the challenges that they, that they struggle with, um, getting through. For instance, if you don't have the self-awareness or the self-regulation skills, um, to work through a difficult situation, you can't always talk through that in an office, but when you're actively working, um, with a horse, attempting a challenging activity, um, sometimes you're faced with those, with the need for those skills. Um, again, that you can't really just learn through talk therapy. Um, we also provide a youth leadership program, um, training youth to become youth volunteers, peer mentors and junior instructors, and an integrated horsemanship program, which provides general lessons to people who are wanting to learn how to ride and handle horses, um, integrated with individuals who also have intellectual and developmental disabilities, but don't need the one-on-one support that therapeutic riding provides. Um, we are requesting support to, um, to assist with a facility expansion project. Um, so this coming year, we will be adding 48 feet to the end of our arena. Um, and then a mental health wing that is just a dedicated, um, zone for two additional mental health professionals and another area to do equine assisted therapy. Um, I just want to talk for a minute about how, uh, much our community needs not only more mental health providers, but alternatives to talk therapy. So according to the 2022 Behavioral Health Report put out by the Oregon Health Authority, Columbia County has one mental health provider for every 2,083 residents. Um, and that's compared to one for every 313 residents in Multnomah County. So not only do we have an extreme shortage of mental health providers, but we, Sandy School of Horsemanship, um, are the only ones providing hands-on, um, experience-based therapy, meaning an alternative to talk therapy. Um, in addition to that, so we partner with Amy Coring out of Scappus. Um, she is a licensed mental health provider. She will be doing the clinical supervision for the two mental health providers that we will be bringing on after the expansion is complete. Um, and just to kind of paint a picture, oh, sorry.
You're good.
Um, just to paint a picture of how in need our county is of services. She is the only provider in Scappus and St. Helens that, that, um, specifically serves children. Her caseload is 25 and, um, the last time we met, two weeks ago, just that week alone, she received 14 calls for a new client. Her waitlist is full, her caseload is full. So it's, it, there's just not even an option for kids who, um, who need mental health in this county. Um, so right now we primarily serve children. We only work with kids within the Oregon Health Plan. Um, and 85% of our current caseload are kids in foster care. Um, this facility expansion will also allow us to partner with, um, with the CCMHDD program to begin, um, providing job training and life skill development for individuals with developmental disabilities. Um, and hopefully resume a partnership we had with CCMH years ago to provide equine assisted therapy to, um, their caseload, um, partnering with one of their therapists. So, any questions?
Yes. Santiago.
You said, you said you work with the Oregon Health Care Plan. Does that mean that they, it doesn't come out of the pockets of the participants or?
Correct. So for the equine assisted therapy program, um, we are able to bill OHP for services.
Is that for the majority of?
Um, we serve 110 clients per week and our, our EAP, so the equine assisted therapy program is only able to serve 12 right now. We're at max capacity with the waitlist. Um, but when this facility expansion is complete, we'll be able to serve 36 a week. So it will triple our, um, our EAP capacity.
Then the rest of the participants?
Rest is all out of pocket.
Pocket.
Yeah. There's not a way to bill insurance for those services, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, that would be the one. Um, got Scappus. Let's, uh, skip Scappus Historical Society for a minute and go to Scappus Library, followed by Scappus Library, Earth Day, then Movies in the Park.
Start the timer. Let's make up some time. I can do two in four minutes. Okay, um, Earth Day. As you know, before we started doing something, actually three years ago, although two years ago, I want to talk about. Um, there was no Earth Day celebration in Columbia County. So we decided to start that as an educational component to get information out to the public, how they can save money by saving energy because there's a lot of grants and government programs right now for that information or rebates. Um, Earth Day costs about $6,000 for us to put on every year at the current stage because, um, we give out recycled swag bags full of information. We have publicity. We have entertainment. Um, and it's an opportunity for the police department to interact with the public um, in a non-threatening atmosphere. So, um, for the past two years, we've been doing that solely with private money. So this is the first year we've come to council to ask for, um, donation or a support of $1,000 for that event. Have any questions?
No, it's up, do you have a rough idea of how many people participated this last year?
Um, between five and 700, we had, um, 500 bags that we gave out. And those were limited to one per family. So there were actually 250 adult bags and 250, um, children's backpacks.
You're already starting to plan next year?
Yeah.
Questions? I think timing wise, we were, uh, for this year, we were, you should be, like, we look for a year out, but you'll have done this by next year and can report back and.
Yeah, because the event's in April. Um, okay, Movies in the Park. Hey, you didn't start the timer. Movies in the Park, um, we've been doing that since 2018. We started that because there were no city events when I started this job. Um, and people had talked about, uh, doing movies in the park, so we just went ahead and did it. Um, so it's grown and grown and grown and we average three to 400 people a night now out here in the park. Um, we have used grant dollars from you guys in the past to, uh, buy a new projection system to, um, a, for the entertainment. And this year, it's going to be a more expensive event than it was for the past two years because, um, movie rental price is going to go up. For the past two years, I was able to negotiate a flat fee for the entire season. They aren't willing to do that this year and there's five weekends. And the math works out where we pay the entertainment around $500 a night and movie rental is going to be $600 to $700, I think, per night. Those are just the hard costs, plus publicity, plus if we do a billboard, that's about $1,500 per billboard.
Great.
Any questions?
You promise nice, warm, sunny nights every Friday. Thank you, Jeff. Hey, um, I will, I will read, uh, Scappus Historical Society. They are on talking about, um, Light Flight from Janet Williams. Uh, the Scappus Historical Society is again hosting the holiday light competition. In 2022, we had 12 houses participate. We doubled in 2023 with 24 houses and expect more entries this year. The response has been positive with so many families enjoying viewing the many displays and it made a fun and free holiday event combined with Whoville. Any attendees of Whoville followed up with a drive through the city to view the light displays. Historical, uh, society asked for your support this year for this growing community tradition. Okay, Scappus School District Chess Club, you are up. With United Way of Columbia County on deck.
Uh, good evening here at council. Um, uh, Joel Haugen, Scappus resident. I think you may know Pete. Um, and this is, uh,
Can't get rid of him.
This is Tyson Brandt. Uh, he's a high school sophomore. He's been playing chess since he's been seven, since he's seven. Hasn't beaten his dad yet. He's, he's getting up there, so.
Have you beaten my dad?
Who's your dad?
I mean, my dad, my son.
Robbie, Robbie Back.
Probably.
Challenge. Get him quick.
Anyway, uh, so this will be, uh, the third version, uh, for the Scott, Mike Sheen Memorial Chess Tournament.
You get a little closer.
Uh, un- unfortunately, um, Maddie Sheen and her daughter April, uh, were detained and weren't, weren't detained, weren't arrested or anything, but, uh, they weren't able to make it this evening, but they, they had planned to come here and, uh, it's a, it's. And it's a, it's a really interesting story, the way, the way Mike got started in chess in the, in the tough neighborhoods of LA. So if you happen to explore that story, I really encourage you to do it, because it's really inspiring. Anyway, so Mike passed away in, in 2018, and then we started up to memorialize that the first year, and then we did the second year, pre-COVID, then we scratched it. So this is the resurrection, as you're aware. We tried this in April, too much of it's too short a timeframe. So we're going to run this sometime in October, November, and we would really appreciate your support, again, because this is a, really a salmonel in a, in a, in an event that we hope will just cascade forward. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Tyson to see if he has any comments.
Think chess is fun? Could be nice to do a chess tournament.
But yeah, your support is really instrumental in this, and it really fits the goals quite nicely for, for community events and so forth. So without, don't have any questions, we'll, we'll exit.
When you were bringing this up last time, you had a gentleman you were bringing in from down south.
Oh, right. And that's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. He's now the president of the Oregon Scholastic Chess Federation. So he, he was planning to do that this spring. He said he's going to try to do that this fall, if it fits his schedule, but if he, if he can't personally do it, he said he will find someone certainly competent from the, from the Scholastic Chess Federation crew to fill in for him.
Great. Thank you.
Do a quick question. So Tyson, how many are in the chess club, and what kind of grades or ages do you think that spans?
Chess club or the chess classes? There's not technically a chess school. I plan on starting one next year.
Okay.
Is it a J-term class?
It's a J-term and. There's about three classes, I believe, no, three or four classes, and class I'm in has around like thirty people in it, and so it's probably around people, all the classes.
And then when the club starts, because this is for the Scappus School District Chess Clubs, would that span multiple schools or just kind of at the high school level?
This, this actually is open for any age limit. No, there are no limits, so we try to mix it up. It, it ends up coming back with primarily the, the local and elementary, mid-school, and high school. But we would encourage, you know, having an eight-year-old play an eighty-year-old. So, in fact, my, my son lives up in Edmonds, he's going to, he's going to register and come down for the event. He went through the, the programs here in Scappus and, and is twelve playing chess, and he's trying to model it for his kids.
So will you have the chess classes help organize the tournament, help mode it? I mean, if it's in October, it'll be before next J-term. You guys can start to promote it and be part of the process leading up to it?
Absolutely, and we, and we would hope that the city would also help promote it. And once we get that date cemented, I would really encourage you to put that in, try to get that into the program for the, for League of Oregon Cities Conference, which includes on October nineteenth. This, this is a kind of event that if we can really build in the upcoming years, you know, it makes Scappus stand out, because there's no other city in Oregon or in Washington I'm aware of that does this kind of stuff.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, people.
Good day.
Thank you, Tyler. United Way of Columbia County. And then we would, we need to discuss Gabby's Community Club.
Good evening. I'm Claire Cat. I serve as the executive director for United Way of Columbia County, and in that role, I'm also the coordinator for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. I'm joined by Dolly. She got all dressed up for you tonight. What you might not know about Dolly, she was raised in a one-bedroom home. She had eleven siblings, all that their family had very young in life, and her dad did not know how to read. Her dad did not know how to read until Dolly was an adult. She experienced firsthand what literacy means, and as she became more and more famous, she decided that that was her passion project. So she started a book gifting program, very, very simple. Provide our earliest learners books, starting from birth to their fifth birthday. So when they enter kindergarten, they have their own personal library, books that they own, that they love, that are part of them. It started in her hometown, and it expanded now worldwide. In 2018, United Way of Columbia County pulled together some great community partners, Jeff is one of them, to make a local affiliate chapter happen. So at the local level, we're responsible for recruiting kiddos, enrolling them in the program, updating addresses, figuring out when kiddos move, and funding the program, purchasing the books. This, the program is very simple, just one book for in the mailbox of each kiddo. It's not competitive with local libraries. Instead, it's really supportive and collaborative, because they can sign up at their local library. And these are books that they own forever. They never have to return. They can gift them, of course, to someone else or hand them down to a sibling. The books are age-appropriate, so I have five different books that came out in the month of March. Board books for those zero-year-olds that may just chew on their books. Learning with Lama Lama Shape, so this might be a one-year-old book that's really colorful and just talks about shapes and colors. Green Tractor, Tractor Verde, so at each age level, there are some bilingual books, which I think is wonderful exposure for our kids, especially the kiddos that maybe are in an English, English-speaking home, but go to school with bilingual kids to have this exposure at home and really normalize bilingual as part of their family culture's need. This might be a four, a three-year-old book, A B C, You and Me, so just really beautiful pictures with kind of yoga poses in ABCs. And then an older book in our garden, so oftentimes they are seasonally appropriate. There are lots of snowbooks in the winter and gardening books in the summer. The books rotate, so each kid has kind of a different library. If you have a zero, if you have someone that was born in 2018 and someone that was born in 2019, they'll have a different set of sixty books when they graduate the program. We serve in Columbia County. This has been six years going. We serve right over fourteen hundred kids throughout the entire county, which is a lot. It's hard for me to pull exact locations, but I did by zip code. It was right over three hundred and fifty kids with a Scappus zip code. I couldn't get any more specific than that unless I want to MapQuest every address, which I wasn't willing to do. Any questions about the program? Thank you so much for sponsorships and support in previous years. We also have gotten support from the City of St. Helens, and the county commissioners are supportive of this program, and then we rely really heavily on private donors, individuals, and foundations.
Show Beth in the garden book, just for you.
I'll give you this copy.
Any questions?
Other than, my kid's a big fan, so we, we have an entire library based on it. She's aged out at this point, but.
Love it.
Went through the whole thing.
Yes.
My wife's a big fan.
Good, yes. If you talk to early, you know, early educators, they, they love the program, because what's better than kids that love books when they enter kindergarten, right? We know that that's a success, that will set kids up for success. Kindergarten readiness scores will be higher, third-grade reading scores will be higher, high school graduation rates will be higher.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Hey, you guys got some emails. We've got about a minute here. I probably, I won't get too far, but were we interested in looking at the Scappus Community Club application? You guys got the emails there. Do you guys want to start the meeting? Those here, would, do you want to speak on that behalf? Want to get the meeting going and listen, and then we can make that decision. Okay, so work sessions, I'm going to adjourn it here, and we'll start up regular session in just a minute. Meeting adjourned.